President of our Pearland Chamber of Commerce and delivering goods and things. And I wait as she finishes her mission. Carol Arch, thank you so much for what you do in the way of playing Santa Claus and the job you do with the Chamber of Commerce. Is that it? Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Pearland, for December the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. It's hard to believe. You please rise for eleven invocations tonight by Councilmember Owens. Councilmember Carbon will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Would please bow your heads with me, please. Your heavenly fathers, we come to you today, Lord. Pray and thank you for the many blessings and prayers that you venture for each and every one of us. Lord, as we go through this season here now, through the Christmas season, let us not forget exactly what this is all about. It's the birth of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Lord, as many things is going across the nation today, we pray actually for our police department here and other police departments within the city. There seems like right now there's no recognition or support for the police departments as we're losing them on daily. And, Lord, we just need for you to put your arms around and embrace them as they go out within the cities, Lord, during this period of time. This time of year brings out the best and the worst of all people. Lord, we ask for all these prayers and blessings in your name. Amen.
Do you want me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
That's the truth.
I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. We, it may be approaching the end of the year, but we have a council meeting to do, and we're in the process of doing that tonight. If you want to follow our action, if you have the agenda, I have, I'll be working from the same agenda that you might have a copy of. So we can, and I'll announce what that is as we proceed, so that you can keep up with where we are in the process. Moving to item number three on our agenda, which is roll call, and we have all of our city council members here with bright and shiny faces. And we are in process of moving to finish out the year before too many more council meetings, before too many more days. Moving to item number four, citizen comments. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four citizens that wish to speak tonight. Two of them are on items on our agenda, so we'll wait till we get to those items. But then we have two, one that would like to speak on Pearland Animal Services. Lisa Lake, please approach the podium. Let me your comments to three minutes. I'll let you know when you're down to thirty seconds.
Six. Just now here. Okay. Let you do the one before that. State your name and address, please, also.
Lisa Lake, and two thousand nine West Minister. Dear Mayor and City Council, I ask for further investigation into what happened in the case of Miesker Coombs, who was killed at the Pearland Animal Control, November thirtieth. I'm a resident of Pearland for over twenty years and an avid supporter of our police department. And until now, I had never really thought I had any problems with Pearland Animal Control. I understand that the police department has sent out information on social media. The actual incident report is not available until tomorrow, but from the information that is available, I have more questions than answers. While some citizens are crying out that this is a terrible mistake by what probably is an overworked and underfunded shelter, that doesn't appear to be the issue. Unless the city can answer some of these questions, the issue will not go away, but hopefully this can be resolved. Cheryl Coombs was told that her cat was assumed feral and wasn't checked for a chip until after it had been killed. Cat was healthy, had clear eyes, shiny fur, and was well-fed. It was neutered, tattooed, and chipped. There was no information to show that the staff based their feral determination on anything other than the behavior of a scared cat. Any pet picked up could have been in a similar state with a lost collar or tag in choosing to fight since they couldn't choose flight. State law requires a check for a chip be made prior to euthanasia, and that's, you can see in the packet, I've provided that. It also requires that those performing euthanasia be trained. They had told Cheryl the cat couldn't be fed or watered the entire time they had it. Seems that some method should have been figured out. State law requires that animals receive food and water. We still have no information on how the cat, who would not eat or drink, was killed. State law requires that dogs and cats be euthanized only by administering sodium pentobarbital. Please note that the only humane way to administer this drug is by injecting the animal. If the cat could be injected with the drug that killed it, it could have also been sedated to confirm there was no chip. Please refer to the Humane Society of the United States Euthanasia Reference Manual for the injection methods that's provided. Page ninety-four, the IC method, would be the only legal method available. Please note that the animal should be unconscious for this, and that would be the perfect opportunity to once again have checked for a chip. Please also note that page seventy-five lists unacceptable ways of euthanasia, which, when dealing with a cat, are all against state law, section eight-two-one, point oh-five-two. In the IC method of euthanizing a cat, one might be concerned of the City of Pearland's cost for administering a sedation drug for every cat. It appears that there is plenty of money allocated for this department.
Thirty seconds.
Looking at the budgets from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, animal services expenditures have been an average of eighty-one thousand dollars under their original approved budget. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope Cheryl's answers to the questions related to her specific case will be answered. Why were there seventy-two hours not adjusted for the holiday? Why were protocols avoiding violating state laws for chipping not followed? How and why was her healthy neutered chip cat killed? Before the next city council meeting, I hope to have insight on why is the shelter allocated money they are not using? Is the state involved in this incident?
Time's up.
Thank you.
The next person wishing to speak is our very own Carol Art. Please give your name and address, and let me your comments to three minutes. I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and those of you in the audience. I'm Carol Arts Buchek, President of the Pearland Chamber of Commerce, six-one-one-seven Broadway, Pearland, Texas. And I'm here to bring good tidings, not sad and workable things. It's Christmas, and it's the holidays, so I want to wish all of you a wonderful holiday season with your family and friends, and of course, our community. Great event over the weekend promoting Pearland and our city. We're very, very, very happy that our city is doing so well, and I'm certainly happy to be with the Chamber of Commerce, who is a partner with the city. And so tomorrow night, we are hosting our annual Christmas Open House from five to seven. You're all invited, six-one-one-seven Broadway. It is a lot of fun, and generally, we have a board of director band and sing-along, but our pianist passed away this last year, so we have a karaoke. So we're doing Christmas karaoke. For any of you who like to sing, or even don't like to sing, if you can read and follow music, we would love to have you there. And just bring a smile upon your face. It seems like everyone's all down and out tonight with this business stuff that we have to deal with, but tomorrow night, you can come, let it all hang out, and sing some Christmas carols with us. Thank you so much.
Mayor, that completes our citizen comments until we get to specific agenda items. Okay, thank you. Moving in our agenda to item number five, we're going to change pace here just a little bit. Public hearing, it's the second hearing, voluntary annexation of eighteen acres of land, generally located east of County Road forty-eight, Kingsley Drive, north of County Road fifty-nine, which is Magnolia Parkway, and south of Flore Park Lane, Southern Trail subdivision. Which is the description of the item for the public hearing tonight. Staff review at this point.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hardy will be going through the presentation. This is the second required public hearing for this voluntary annexation for the area you just described. Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. And Mayor, almost as accurately as you described, this public hearing is number two in the two-part series that provides the public with the opportunity to provide comment and receive the information we have regarding the proposed annexation of eighteen acres in the County Road forty-eight, County Road fifty-nine area of the ETJ. The address of that location is twenty-nine eighty-five County Road forty-eight. And as the map shows, this is the boundary of that parcel, parcel identification number one-seven-nine-zero-one-four. I do want to go back to that slide and make a correction. There was a discussion item in the last public hearing as to whether or not that property had structures on it. Staff erroneously reported that there were. There are no structures on this property, just to make that correction. I believe there was an error with the map. The boundary shifted a little bit to make it look as though properties south of that property were included, structures rather, but we want to make it clear that this is a vacant, this is vacant land. Location map here shows where that parcel is located with regard to the city. And this is the future land use plan for that area. It is low-density residential, and there is a retail node located at the intersection of County Road forty-eight and County Road fifty-nine, just south of that property. Upon completion of this second public hearing, staff will engage the property owners in the process of developing and creating the process moving towards acceptance of a service agreement. We anticipate that taking place latter part of this month, early part of January, and following that, we will proceed with the second, with the first and second readings of the ordinances sometime early in two, in two thousand and twenty, and the zoning processes to be determined. With that, that completes my staff report, Mayor.
That completes your report at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving in our agenda to citizen comments. These are citizen comments for this particular public hearing, not for the ones you gave when you came first, came into the audience tonight. Councilmember. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Second time anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this specific item? Third and final time, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Moving in our agenda to item number eight, which is the opportunity for the council and the staff to discuss the issues relevant to this particular public hearing. And I'll start with the city council. Councilmember Owens, would you have any comments on this item?
No, Mayor. Mayor, I don't have any comments on it.
Okay. Perez?
No, my apologies, I wouldn't intend this in the, in the first meeting, but generally, just a couple of questions related to utilities. I assume that this property was included in the model for the utilities that serve this area, or would an extension be needed?
Councilmember Moore?
One second.
I'm sorry. Member Perez, it's included in the modeling, but it would require extensions of both water and sewer.
And we would, we would put it on whoever develops this property to pay for those extensions.
That's correct.
Other than that, I have no objection.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. And we have adequate police and fire to cover this new area, or we're going to have to make additions?
From our perspective, the area is relatively small. It's contiguous. From those public safety standpoint, don't see any impacts. You know, obviously, this is the annexation, not the development. I mean, that depends a lot, but in that size of area, we would not have issues covering.
Thank you.
That completes your report. Yeah, Councilman Hernandez?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Little?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Carbon? And Councilmember Orlando?
Nothing for me.
Moving to staff discussion of this item.
Mayor, that completes our staff report.
Okay, like you said enough, huh? Okay. With that information in the record, let's move to item ten, which will let me, number nine, which adjourns this public, public hearing, which I shall do at six forty-nine. Moving in our agenda to item number ten, which is a consent agenda, I'll ask Councilmember Orlando to handle this and ask the, or Mayor Protem if there were any items to be with, help from the item. Okay, good. Councilman?
Consideration, or, yeah, consideration and possible action of the consent agenda with the exceptions of items B, F, G, and H. So moved.
Second.
What was the first number, letter?
B.
B, B, G, and H.
B, F, G, and H.
Any other comments from council at this point? Do you have motion, motion second on the floor? Did I hear a second on that? Okay. We're in, staff report. Let's, let's move down to items A with, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbon?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Consent agenda, A through H, passed seven to zero with the exceptions of items E, F, G, and H. Is that correct? Was it E or B?
B as in boy.
Correction.
Okay.
With the exception of B, F, G, and H.
Yeah, G and H.
All right.
Now for Beeb.
Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number fifteen-eight-five, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion. But we did have a second on that item. Why don't we move to staff report?
So item Beeb as in boy, may reading council as the second reading. You saw this two weeks ago. This is required as part of the amendment to the existing TERS number two program. We're adding projects and amending existing budgets, one of those being the FM five-twenty-one work. We're cooperating with, I'm sorry, with Fort Bend County to move forward, others being amendments to the library project. These are all eligible for funding by the TERS number two as improvements within that district. The TERS will end in two thousand and twenty-nine, and these projects will only progress once they have completed them, gotten all the paperwork done, been reviewed, and then they could get in line and in the order in which they are completed. So these would be the step that would allow these to go through that process to, to be reimbursed once they're completed. Nothing to add, sir.
The council, they have a question or comment on staff report?
I do, Mayor. And it's just information on here. I've gotten some information from Shadow Creek, from the kids over there, or some of them, three of them, I think it is. Looking at additional funds or other ways that we can do and improve the crosswalks, I believe that there's been a couple of accidents over there on those kids trying to cross street crossings over there in order to get to school, and they were on the bicycles, and they've been hit, and we've had several near misses over there, and maybe the police chief may be aware of those in that area over there. But I was wondering if, can we use any of the funds off of this to look at different cross-sections or crosswalks in and around the schools over, what improvements we might be able to do? And Councilmember Carbon has received the same information that I.
If, if there's information that'd be helpful to receive, but as council should be aware, there is a separate TERS project that we've advanced, and that's for sidewalk gap fillings and extensions. You can't replace or repair existing facilities with the TERS monies, but we do have a, a line item for those, and so the things that you mentioned, at least, those sound more like regular maintenance items, and we can take a look at those regardless, and outside of this, we don't have to wait. So just share that, and we'll take a look at it. But that's, I don't know if that, any of that would be germane to these amendments that we have before us right now for tonight.
Yeah, this is, I can get you a copy of that. This is, uh, school kids had put together information to look at these different crosswalks of what may be able to be done to make improvements on it where the kids would be safe going across these areas with bicycles and going into school, so.
Again, we'll take a look at that, but the amendment is for the library and for the FM five-twenty-one.
Any other question or comment from council? Here, none. I believe we have motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbon?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty-nineteen dash three hundred, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We're in discussion.
This is a resolution moving forward with additional radio units for the fire services. There'd be a combination of, a couple, three that are based, are fixed into the equipments, and the rest are mobile equipment, so these are all configured to integrate with the rest of our system and provide communications as we expand Station Eight and other areas. Nothing to add.
Council, have any question or comment based on staff report? Did I hear somebody?
No.
Okay. Madam Secretary, I believe we got a sec, motion second on the floor here now.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbon?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty-nineteen dash three oh-one, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a renewal of equipment that's used in our traffic department, sound, sign blanks and various materials. It is part of the renewal, and as such, we can't consider other parts or other vendors from where this came, but just renew in the same terms or, that came through when we looked at this first time.
Council, any question or comment on the staff report?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I pulled this, and I know this is renewal, so maybe just a comment for going forward. And I realize the lowest bidder did not provide, or cannot provide, the refacing service, but the, the lowest bidder is about forty K less in total, from what I see, so as this comes up to, to renew, can we see about bidding it out, or separating out the, I guess, the new signs versus the refacing surface?
Yes, certainly for future, appreciate the observation there, and we'll take another look at that, too.
And when will this, are we out of renewals after this year?
Is this the last, Eric?
I think, I think there's one more renewal. And then one other thing I would point out is that the, the recommended award is to a company that provides signs within five to ten days, depending on whether it's a resurfacing or a new sign, whereas the other bidder, their terms were that they would deliver signs within thirty days, and so that was another factor in, in the, in the decision point.
Okay. I mean, do we, we know when we're building a road, do we carry an inventory in case a stop sign gets plowed over or something?
Well, we do carry inventory, but then there's also street signs and other signs that, you know, we don't carry everything, so oftentimes, we're, we're looking to get signs delivered quicker. We don't have a huge warehouse, so we can't, a lot of things, and on new roads, of course, they're part of the contract, so we don't use this for that, but it's for sign replacements.
All right, thank you.
Any further question or comment from council at this point? We have a motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbon?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty-nineteen dash three oh-four, so moved.
Second.
Mayor, we have one citizen that would like to speak on this consent agenda, item eight. Would Larry Milliken please come up to the podium and state your name and address, and you have three minutes. I'll let you know when you're down to thirty seconds.
Thank you. My name is Larry Milliken, and I live at nine-three-four Plantation, Lake City, Texas. I will say, though, that I am a property owner here in the great city of Pearland. I own two houses in the Meadow Green subdivision and two houses in the Shadow Creek Ranch subdivision. Having said that, I'm wanting to speak about flooding and the adverse things that happened to all of us here a couple of years ago, but the city of Lake City has done two things since the flood, is that we went out and addressed a lot of the concerns to the flooding within our subdivisions and, and the activities surrounding those. We increased our, our capacity in the, in our system to, now we're engineering to a two percent storm rather than one percent storm. We have raised that base elevation for houses, hoping that we could, if we eliminated just the people that flooded by six inches, that would be a third of the folks that flooded in Lake City. On the other side of that is that we also addressed, or addressing, looking at the, the problems with the flood control in both the Clear Creek watershed and the Dickinson watershed, is that, that, as everybody knows, the Clear Creek watershed not only affects Lake City, but it affects all of us, is, is that it originates way up in, I guess it is, Fort Bend County, and comes through Missoria County, goes down through Galveston County, and borders on the, the north to Harris County. We challenged, as a council, we challenged our city manager, Mr. Baumgartner, to address those concerns, to see if we could lead in that area as far as a regional solution to some of the flooding. And, and I passed out on, each member on the dius today, a map of all those flood areas from the Clear Creek watershed and the Dickinson watershed, and that makes it a little difference when you look at it as a whole and looking at, at that green space as far as how big that watershed is and what it all entails, is that everybody in Pearland, they would enjoy a base elevation or an elevation somewhere around twenty-five to thirty feet, I guess, and down in Lake City, we, we're lucky when we get to be having fifteen feet. So they're getting water down the creek is, is, is something fairly easy, and once, once that water comes down, then there's no stopping it, and that's the reason why I'm here, and Mr. Baumgartner presented to city staff a proposal for the working of an engineering study for. study for Clear Creek watershed, and I would like to impress upon you how needed that is so that we can hopefully find a regional solution to that, that watershed problem. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is an interlocal agreement for a flood study, and as was just noted, it is being put forward or spearheaded by Lake City, but obviously, these things are regional in nature and, and take partnerships. We've met with the Lake City staff and their engineering firms. We're very comfortable with moving forward on this recommendation at the level that's noted, given the substantial work that the state of Pearland has done to date with Bexarrea Drainage District Number Four. Our position primarily upstream on the Clear Creek, and we're, we suggest moving forward on this study, and then we'll take into account and see any of the findings and, and specific projects that come down the road, and consider those and those merits and the benefit for Pearland. But at this time, you know, I think as a regional goodwill effort, if you will, this makes sense to at least be a partner, and we're already scheduled, and they've invited us to attend to a meeting on later this week, so we'll stay in the process, report back as this engineering review goes forward. That's all.
Okay. Does council have any question or comment based on the staff report?
I got a comment, Mayor.
Okay.
I already told you all what the comment was, so. I say, Mayor, and I, and probably Markot out there was on city council years ago, after we had a storm come through here and, and lost a lot of property here, and we had gotten in touch with Friendswood and, and actually, Lake City and Dickinson to talk about doing some cleaning on the Clear Creek, de-snagging whatever on there, and, in order to stop, you know, some of them flooding or hopefully prolong it, doing that, and we knew it wouldn't stop at all, but there was some opportunity to do something. And basically, we were told that they did not want to do anything on Clear Creek because it was too pristine and beautiful to look at. And I said, well, that probably doesn't ring much at 3:00 in the morning when you get out of bed, and the water comes up to your knees, that when you look out on Clear Creek, it's not that beautiful anymore. So, but I am glad to see us moving forward with that, to do something on it. But we took a lot of valuable land here in Pearland during that time or since that time, or retention and detention areas that could have been used for something else. But as people here at the city, we, it was decided we need to do those kind of improvements here to hold the water off of us as much as we could, and also the people downstream to us. So just wanted to reiterate that, councilman, city manager, and, and I told you I'd do it, so I promised you that, and, but there's not too many people up here that remember that, maybe two of us and one out in the audience. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other council members have a question or comment?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of questions, if I could borrow the gentleman for just a second. I had just a couple of questions. No way in opposition to the contribution, but just understand. So y'all, y'all scope is from Dixie Farm to, to Galveston Bay, correct? So you could basically dovetail over with?
Yeah, that's, that's the original, but let me say is that, that the difficult part about that is that when you, when you just stop at Dixie Farm, the water still enters the creek at Dixie Farm. Dixie Farm is going to be a, a very definite line when you look at the creek because of the oxbows and the, and the bins in the creek. And currently, right now, the Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee, we review every other month, we review a lot of projects that's happening on Clear Creek, and Mr. Upton can probably brief y'all on those, but let me say is that that snagging and, and all that has been done. It's actually the shelving and the activity that's happened in Friendswood to date, there's a tremendous amount of in-lined detention that's going to be literally thousands of acre-feet of water that's going to be retained in the city of Friendswood, that, that's all and a part of the activities going on. It's not just the activities that, that Woody spoke about, is that they, there is a lot of retention, but quite frankly, when you look at the watershed and think about lowering the effective level of Clear Creek three feet at I-45, it's going to take the cooperation of the entire watershed, of the entire region, not just one area from Dixie Farm Road, but we are, as far as projects go, looking at that. But the projects that, that are, are being talked about today are projects like tunneling or, or diversionary canals and things of that nature, not so much just channelization of Clear Creek. Because then the lower half of Clear Creek, when you get in onto the Webster's and the Nassau bays and, you know, El Lago's and those cities around Clear, Clear Lake itself, then, then that alternate, getting that water out of Clear Lake then becomes an issue, too. But yes, is that the study is from that lower from Dixie Farm Road down, but if we get the water out of Dixie Farm, if there's a diversionary canal or, or tunnel or some sort of activities that are done, then it will relieve the pressure on the downward stream from Pearland.
And I assume y'all will be coordinated with Friendswood based on the results of their, their recent bond election. I know they're going to be putting a lot of investment into study of their portion of Clear Creek. I don't know how that dovetails with what y'all are doing, because I know a good portion of this overlaps their area.
Actually, all of the different jurisdictions are working together. That was one of the main thrusts of, of the study, is that if you notice in the data sheets, it talks in terms of the Corps of Engineers, the Harris County Flood Control signed on for $400 and something thousand dollars. They, it's a, it's a concerted effort of all the different jurisdictions, and it takes into account all of those things. In fact, Galveston County is, is doing a countywide study currently right now of its drainage activities, and the engineers that, that'll be working in this are going to be actually utilizing a lot of the engineering data that is current from Galveston County for this study also.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other council questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not a drainage engineer, and 25K on a study, I'm cool chipping in for, for the regional issues. Now, if it, if it comes back and says, hey, there's a $40 million project, and we're coming back, I'm, I'll need a better explanation of how spending that money off-site is going to help us here in Pearland, but, so I guess my yes vote is a yes at 25K, but not a presumption that we're going to spend more.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm not an engineer myself. I'm actually a real estate person. But having said that, is that let me assure you that it, it pretty much is the projects that, that we believe might be identified in this study, and I, again, the engineers are the ones that are doing it, are going to be multi-jurisdictional activities that we're hoping to capitalize on that $4.2 billion that the General Land Office has for multi-jurisdictional projects, $100 million or more, is that literally, if you talk about building a diversionary canal, you're talking about hundreds of thousands or if not billions of dollars, just like a tunnel, so that there's no jurisdiction that's going to be able to float those kind of dollars. Thank you.
Any other question or comment from the council?
I would just dovetail, I, I don't know why engineers always look at with connotation. We always, we try and do the best we can. I appreciate, I appreciate the effort. I've taught, you know, we had a conversation with Ken Clark some time ago, Commissioner Clark, about this, and I expressed to him and others in the area expressed our, our desire to help study. I think if, I know Member Carbone has his reservations, which are justified, but I wouldn't say that it's not worth approaching us if we have, if we have a project that we think is of value and helps clear the downstream water, that helps clear the upstream water. So I would say that I'd be supportive of a, a project that proves value for Pearland in the future. But to, to, to Member Carbone's point, we, we need to prove the value. Hopefully, the study will, will do that, and hopefully, we can cooperate with you and get, get this Clear Creek issue, which has been a longstanding issue for longer than I've been alive, resolved. And I really appreciate y'all, y'all working with us on this.
So will the remaining balance, the contingency, I mean, what, what will happen with that? Because it's considerable some money that we put forth on this that we're not spending now.
Sorry, on the, the, but, our budget piece, if you mean, where we're getting that from?
Yes.
I think that's where we identified the source of funds, so.
That's just the source of funds for the $25,000. There's no contingency or any other funds allocated or being contributed to this at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question or comment from council? There are none, I believe we have a motion second on the floor, Madam.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Good. Move to new business item number two, Councilmember Little.
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-194, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for any discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a first reading for a zoning change. You have seen this at your JPHs. This does come with a positive recommendation. The applicant, Ms. Pollak Heavens, is seeking a, a rezone from the GB to a general commercial district for this property at Manville and Fight Road that's been activated. Nothing to add.
I believe that's labor for Carbone originally. New business item number one. Yes. Comments from council at this point?
Yeah, I, I'm probably going to wait till next time it comes out, but I read all the information that was sent to us on, from the folks on, on this property and looking at putting in another storage facility. So that's what it is in there, and I guess, you know, we'll look at it, but when it comes out again for the, if it's a storage facility, going to put in, my vote is going to be no. The comparison on that, what they've done compared to the renters in Houston versus the renters in Pearland, and we don't have that many renters in Pearland, but on a storage space, but, so I'll just save my vote later on, but I'll go ahead and vote for this, but discussion when it comes out again, I'll be totally against it.
Briefly for staff, with this change in zone, what uses open up that would be allowed either by right or a conditional use if we allow for the zone change?
General business and general commercial are very similar. It really allows more automotive intense uses within the general commercial district. Those would be similar to your drive-throughs and, like I said, the storage facilities, things of that nature, the, the more intense uses.
And forgive my ignorance, with the, with the storage facility under, with the zone change, would that require a conditional use permit before it could be approved?
The storage facility actually requires a conditional use permit in either general business or general commercial, which is why they were able to apply for the December joint public hearing.
I'm sorry, say that again.
They were able to apply for the December joint public hearing, which will be the next upcoming meeting, because it already has a general business zoning designation right now.
Well, I mean, I guess, we're not, we're not zoning for the use, but if they're, if they're allowed for the use under the same conditions for either zone?
This is two lots, so they're changing the zoning for both properties.
Okay.
One lot, the corner lot, is what is proposed for the storage facility.
They're, they're, they're expanding, they're expanding the zone so that it's all contiguous, or?
It's the, the property that Signature Company zones.
Okay. I, I would generally say, regardless of the storage facility, and we can, we can measure that with the conditional use, I, I don't think that this intersection is inappropriate for general commercial, so, and it's general commercial is directly across the street. The uses there, I don't think are inappropriate, so I'm okay with the zone change. The use may, may come up for discussion in the future, but the zone change is fine for me.
Council, have any other, other council members have a question or comment at this point?
I just comment, Mayor. A few years ago, we approved a, a storage unit on 518, and there was a little bit of flack over that. And I, I don't see an issue putting it back here off of Fight and County Road 1128. It's off of, you know, a major roadway, 1128 or Manville Road has not really developed to a major roadway yet, but I, I don't see an issue putting it here. Storage, storage facilities usually don't create a lot of traffic, and with this being on the corner across from the Rogers Middle School there, I, I think it'd be a good place for it. It'll help keep the traffic down, opposed to if it was some other kind of retail store that would create a lot of traffic in that area and contend with the school, school traffic in the morning and the afternoon, so I, I really don't see an issue of it being here.
Any further comment or question from council?
Mayor, I want to clarify, to mine, it's not the location or whatever, it's a number of storage places that we have within the city of Pearland right now, and it's getting so crowded, if you look on 518 down toward 288, we've got two storage places within 200 yards of each other on 518. I just think there's a better use for the property we have around here than storage that we got, and I would ask our staff by the next meeting that we have, when we start talking about the storage areas, I'd like to know how many square footage that we have on storage facilities in Pearland right now, because most of the justification that they sent to us to look at on there shows us comparing us with, with the city of Houston, and more on the comparison is for renters than anything else as compared to Houston's renters versus Pearland's renters. So, yeah, I'd like to know how many we've got in Pearland. We're coming out on 518, quite a few storage places around here, and I think there's just a better use of our property that we have here, so, but I would like to have some of that information when we get ready to discuss this at the next meeting.
Since this is consideration only of the zone change, Mayor, I have no comments. Thank you.
You have no comments either. I don't think there's, there's an awful lot of development out there, so at least if we had something going, put in, if, if that is, would be something we'd like to see, but in there, I think it would stimulate that whole area from a, from a business standpoint. Council, have any further question or comments? Carbone, would you have further comments? I don't believe we've got a lot of questions here, Madam Secretary. I believe we've got a motion second here.
Councilmember Little. Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Over to new business item two, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1584-1, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. We have a motion second, we're in discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is our traditional first budget amendment now that we're into the fiscal year. And we've done some of the preliminary, emphasized preliminary closes on the FY '19 financials. There are a number of projects that continue over into the budget years. And we need to recognize those with the budget amendment. We do have a couple other recognitions that we recommend consideration for. But Mr. McCarter, Assistant Finance Director, will walk you through that presentation that's included in your packet, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is John McCarter, Assistant Finance Director here at the city. And tonight, we'll present budget amendment number two. Our turn number one for your consideration. Just looking over the agenda for tonight, the majority of the expenses we'll talk about tonight are carryovers. So we'll start with defining what a carryover is. We'll touch briefly on the unaudited year-end standing for general fund, water and sewer. I want to reiterate what Mr. Pearson said. These are unaudited numbers, so these are our best estimates at this point. They will change by the time we come back in January to talk about a projection, a multi-year projection. And we'll see that firm up at that point. But this is our best guess as of right now. Then we'll go through each one of the carryovers in general fund, water and sewer, and talk about some FEMA adjustments that we have in here as well. Then we can answer questions. We'll be back here in a week for the second reading. So defining carryovers, as I mentioned, this is the bulk of what we're talking about here tonight. Essentially, a carryover is really the process of moving the expenditures and revenues from one fiscal year to the next. This is a standard procedure in local government operating funds because not everything fits nice and neatly into one fiscal year. For us, we're pretty explicit about what we define as a carryover and what is not. Most of these are goods and services that were ordered in fiscal year '19 but not received by the end of the fiscal year. So we have to pay them in the correct place. It's just moves the budget that allows us to do that. I also see some special projects that were budgeted and scheduled to be complete by the end of the fiscal year, but were delayed, so we're wrapping those up in early FY '20. Also, each year at mid-year, we do a mid-year allocation. You'll see several of those items on this list as well. Carryovers are not small-dollar items. So we don't carry over anything that's less than $1,000 as a line item. Those are absorbed into fiscal year '20 budgets. These are not meant to compensate for reductions during the FY '20 budget. We did go through several rounds of those. So this is not to compensate for anything that was removed from the budget. And these are not operation supplies or recurring expenditures. You will not see salaries. You will not see things like office supplies listed in those items. If you're looking for the full line item list, it's on page 14 of your packet. That's every, everything that's getting carried over with account number, short description, and an amount. So starting with the general fund, this shows our preliminary FY '19 year-end income statement. Starting with revenues, we are projecting to finish about $600,000 over in revenue. We met our numbers in both property taxes and sales tax, which is a good thing there. So we are within just that $600,000 there. On the expenditure side, the $3.2 million represents about a 2% variance from our projections. This number will likely change because we do have outstanding invoices for FY '19 that haven't posted yet. So we will see this number. I would bet that that would come down as a variance of total. Most of that, about $1.3 million, is for salaries, salary savings from vacancies, and also overtime that wasn't expensive, some part-time expenses as well. So that brings us to our amount over policy of about $3.9 million for the year end. Again, likely to change the next time we talk about this. The FEMA reimbursement items, so we talked about carryovers prior. These fall into the adjustment category. So I believe it was a little bit over a week ago, we were notified by FEMA that we would likely get a reimbursement of about $1.6 million for our expenditures from Harvey, Hurricane Harvey. Staff is recommending that we go ahead and allocate the general fund-only portion of that now. This will all remain on hold until we actually see that check hit the bank. So we will not be expensing this until we actually see the payment come through. But we will not be back for another budget amendment until July. So this allows staff to move ahead once we receive that payment. Instead of waiting until July, we are not considering other funds as a part of this because we don't have anything pressing to tackle right now. This was talked about in Mr. Pearson's transmittal letter for the FY '20 budget. The notes on the right kind of tie that back. The asset management and the comp plan both match exactly. Vehicles of $420,000. One of our goals over the next few years is going to be to get rid of all of our Crown Victorias, which are expensive and quickly aging. This takes care of six of them, leaving us with 16 remaining. Contribution of $200,000 to streets and sidewalks. And then a contribution of $280,000 to fund balance. That's a little bit more than the two months to keep us where we want to be in terms of that two-month recurring expenditures. That brings us to the $1.6 total. That's our, what we have is our best number from FEMA right now in terms of that amount we're going to get. So putting all of this together, we have $906,000 of carryovers. And you can find those on page 14 of your packet, tied with the $1.3 million of expenditures, $1.6 million of revenue for that FEMA reimbursement. That puts us roughly $2.9 million over policy is our projection right now. We will have a white paper that discusses some mid-year allocation possibilities. We'll tackle that in February. And then we'll go ahead and do the allocation in July. So we will revisit that year-end number. But we are, we're showing here that we have the resources to cover both the FEMA items and the carryovers with the current resources. Moving along to enterprise fund, this is a little hard to read because we did a refunding this year. So those variances of 20 and 30 million dollars actually aren't that big. You see about $27.9 million in revenues and expenditures for the in and the out of the refunded bonds. So on the revenue side, we finished about $2.7 million over. That's almost entirely due to sales of water and sewer. On the expenditure side, we finished about $7 million under, 3.2 of which is going to get carried over. So 3.8 million was the amount that we finished under on the expenditure side, just talking about the operations piece. $500,000 of that was savings from the refunding. We saw some salary savings in there as well as some lower-than-expected purchases of water throughout the year. So all of that tied together brings us to the $9.8 million over policy here. We'll roll that over, the $3.2 million worth of expenditures being carried over. You can find that detailed on page, I believe, 15 of your packet with all of that. Again, just adding to the resources at the end of this fiscal year, projecting a contribution of $705,000 to that fund balance. There are also a number of other funds included. The special revenue funds, most notably, there's funding for the Train Depot renovation, which was outlined in a Thursday packet that went out, I believe, two weeks ago. We also have some funding for the ongoing Nattorian project that was detailed in another Thursday packet a few weeks ago. Motorpool Fund, obviously, a lot of vehicles outstanding to be purchased with a long lead time there. We also have a new fund here, our Infrastructure Redevelopment Fund. This $491,000 represents the remaining balance for street and sidewalk maintenance in FY '19. We are essentially recommending that we create this new capital fund to get these big-dollar street and sidewalk budgets out of general fund because they're really not operational in nature. So in addition to this $491,000, we would put the $200,000 for the FEMA reimbursement and the balance of the FY '20 budget all into a new fund, and that would automatically roll from year to year. It would really be kind of similar to the way the Motorpool Fund is set up. That would just get that off of general fund. We'd still talk about it, still be central to our discussions. But we'll just make it a little bit easier for our friends in Public Works to orient that the way they need to. The total amount for FY '19 with all of that would be about $1.8 million of streets and sidewalks funding. And then lastly, PEDC funding here, $1.5 million. That is detailed in a packet that went to their board and was approved on 10/30 of this year. And so the detail is attached in your packet as well. So with that, I'll hand it back to Mr. Pearson. We will be back here in one week from today for the second reading.
Again, Mr. Mayor and Council, a lot in there. But I believe through our earlier communications, we, you've seen all this before. And, you know, the items are all positive and in line with what you've seen. And so recommend we move forward. But very open to any questions or clarifications that you might have. It's not really September 16th, it's December 16th, so.
Council, have a further question at this point? That does get a little complicated, mixing the way we have to spend money last month before, before October 1. And the fact that it would be in the next budget year and trying to reconcile that, it can be a little confusing at times. But I think you did a good job on it. So appreciate that. Council, have any question?
Not really a question, mayor. But just for clarification for those in the audience, where the second reading would be next week, correct? So the slide is, just got a typo. Other than that, I'm comfortable moving forward. And I appreciate all the work and effort that I put in.
Hernandez?
Just wanted to say that I think it's a very good thing that we're getting new vehicles for the police department. On National Night Out, I had the privilege of riding in one of those old Crown Vics. And it took two different attempts to get it started. And it was leaking water inside. So I think our PD definitely deserves better vehicles, especially, you know, if they're needed for an emergency. So I'm glad to see this.
That's good. Appreciate that. Any other comment, councilman?
I've got a comment, mayor. I commend the staff on the three-plus-million-dollar positive variance. Is there any way we can use some of this excess of the policy minimum to pay down some debt?
We'll come back to you at the budget process. But at this juncture, you know, the levy's been set. And, you know, it'd be more appropriate for looking at options with the fund balance for FY '21 then. But we're locked in for the current fiscal year. But the debt levy's been set, so that's locked in.
Council, have any other questions or comment? Carbon, I'm sorry.
Thank you, mayor. If you go back and pull up slide five, a couple of questions there. It might just be semantics on there, but it says, replace Crown Vics. Are we still, yeah, six Crown Vics fully equipped at 70K each? Are we going back to the Crown Vics? Or are you talking about replacing those with the new Explorers?
Good question. That's confusing. We'll update that for next time. It will be four Explorers that will be replacing these. So we're replacing the Crown Vics with Explorers.
Perfect, all right. And then on the asset management at 500K, can you remind me again what that's for and what that entails?
What, we did have a packet about it recently in the process. But I guess Trent can just give you an overview about that part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Yes, councilmember, the asset management system is, it's an implementation of asset management system that'll cover not only Public Works and all of our infrastructure there, parks as well, our plants, our facilities. And it's basically an implementation similar to in size and scope of the ERP, of which we'll be able to track, analyze the longevity and the life of all of our assets, be able to do more predictive spending and analysis of where our spending goes to optimize that. And I think most importantly, in the short term, is to replace our work order system, which dates back to the HTE system, which we replaced all but the work order system with the ERP implementation. So we've got a very antiquated system for managing and tracking our work orders, which don't necessarily tie back into our GIS and our infrastructure there, and don't provide automated updates and feedback to those that have sent in work orders and work requests to us. So it's, it'll eliminate a lot of those manual processes.
Okay. If you go to slide seven, the enterprise fund. So once you pull out the refunding, we've got, revenue was up 2.7 million because we sold more water than projected?
Yes, to residents, yes.
And then I guess the flip side of that is our expenses were down by roughly 3.8 because we didn't buy as much water?
Yeah, and that's just a shift in where the water resources were coming from. And that doesn't account for the whole variant. I have to follow up to get you a number, but.
But on the cuff, you know, on the back of us hearing about residents being told they're having water leaks and the new meter issue is on their side, not ours, you're telling us we sold $2.7 million more of water and we didn't have to buy almost 3 million of water? So that tells me that maybe the meters are, there is a concern there, right?
So the whole 3 million is not from sale of water? I'll have to get you a specific number, but that is not, that is a component of it, but not 3 million.
Okay. But even if, I'd like some more detail on that because that doesn't jive with the residents that are saying, hey, you know, my bill's been higher. I mean, we've heard several of those stories. And I keep saying, hey, if that's the case across town, we'd see it in some high-level analytic, and here it is. We're selling more and we're purchasing less. So help me reconcile that back to somebody that says my bill's been higher than ever before because of usage. And if you go to slide nine, you'd mentioned the depot. I guess that's in the special revenue fund?
Yes, sir. The CVB Hotel Motel Fund.
Okay. And that, I mean, that was something we had earmarked and we're just carrying over from last year for this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's still, I haven't seen that memo. I'm still catching up on them. But is that, that was, I think, a dollar-for-dollar match in the past? Is that still the case?
So councilmember Carbon, if I may, the Thursday packet, which you probably haven't seen, back in November, on November 13, that was presented to the CVB Advisory Board to go ahead and move forward with the expenditure of those funds. The CVB Advisory Board unanimously recommended moving forward with that. Now, prior to that, city council, when we brought this to you the year before, we had told you that the total project was about $900,000 and that there was going to be fundraisers and some other things that took place, Brick Paver Project, et cetera. That's raised about roughly $10,000 worth of funds, plus another, some additional funding for a video that talks about historic preservation of the depot. The bottom line is, is what this ultimately would be doing is authorizing the money to move forward and actually start construction within this next year for that project, which would be, just be the first phase. And that's only the restoration of the depot itself, including the exterior, the roof, the foundation, basically 100% restoration of the building. The facility is in a case, it's in a state right now that if it's not renovated within the next couple of years, the reality is it's going away. That facility is in need, and that's what this money's recommended for.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I guess in my mind, it was a million-dollar project. Council, last time we saw it, we agreed to match dollar-for-dollar. And I think the committee was going to raise a half million. And I was comfortable with the expenditure because we were matching somebody else's dollar. I guess now it sounds like we're putting the first 500 up and we'll see what happens?
I would say the facility needs to be renovated, period. And the million was for not just the renovation of the depot. It was also for an ancillary building called an event facility, which was going to be utilized for different types of rentals. That's not part of this. This is strictly the renovation of the depot. It also would include, and I didn't mention this earlier, would be accessible, ADA accessible restrooms.
All right. I guess at a minimum, if we could attach that Thursday memo to the second reading of this ordinance, just so it's out there.
Absolutely.
For the public. And I don't know, I'd be interested to get council's feedback. We had a lengthy discussion last budget cycle regarding this. And are we cool throwing 500K at it without a match?
Piggybacking off that, are we going to, is it going to require council approval to authorize that 500,000? Or is that, is it considered that it was already done?
Ultimately, with this approval, that would be your authorization to move forward with the project. You certainly would obviously approve a contract once it came back before you. But this would be, the money was allocated a year ago. This money would be carried forward. And then the recommendation is to move forward with the project within this next year's time period.
Gotcha. Yeah, my understanding was the same as member Carbon's, that that was matching. So I would like to have that discussion at the second reading as well.
Yeah, I'd be interested in discussing that at.
Yeah, I'd be interested in discussing that at a second reading also, but I do have a question. So this will be, all the construction and everything will be run by the city? So the city will hire the contractor to do all of the work?
That's correct. Also, once this, ultimately, if this project is approved, it would be submitted to the project department. They would put it in line with all of their other projects, schedule it out, and it would be bid, just like we would do any other city project. So it would be run completely by the city.
Is this not something a historical society could do? To hire the contractor to do the work? You're going to get it about half price?
I would say that we wouldn't do that on any other city facility. This is a City of Pearland facility, so I would recommend we do it in-house like we do all other projects.
If we move forward with this, say, even without the matching element, it's not locking us into any other portions of the total, I guess, concept, right? This is just saying we're allocating the funds to the restoration of the depot itself, correct? Any additional work would be?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is this out of hot tax money? Okay, that's what I was wondering. You know, I think it's really, you know, a shame. We need to go ahead and get this thing going, for sure. This edition of the TechStop magazine come out with about 125 cities in the state of Texas that they were asking people to go to and visit because of different things in the city. And, you know, I think it's, for us, Pearland was not even mentioned and we're 125 years old. We're not retaining any of the history as it is right now of the City of Pearland, where people actually come in and put, you know, heads in bed to really come in and do anything. But I thought it was, you know, from TechStop of actually putting it out in their magazine and that, you know, spring was. I don't know if Lake City was on there or not. I don't remember on there, but there's quite a few cities around here that have so many areas in there to explore and that's how they're, the TechStop put that out, showing, you know, different opportunities to go into different cities and what to do. And so we're missing out on that, or a city that's 125 years old. And really, the only thing we've got is left is that out there, on there. And I'd really like to see us move forward on it.
I think maybe, maybe for clarification, we're just talking about a budgetary allocation, but not approval of the project. Correct? So we would have.
This is a budgetary allocation, yes, but the intent is clearly to move forward with the project upon approval inclusion into the budget.
I think, at least with, for the purposes of this, of this agenda item, I'm okay allocating the money for the project with the condition of we still haven't approved the project. You know, I think there is still some heavy discussion to be had when this, when this project is intended to move forward. I think there's a lot of things that are going to change between now and then. I'm okay with staff's recommendation to allocate the funds, but not necessarily saying that's a preemptive approval of the project moving forward. I know that's splitting hairs, but we're just, we're just trying to make sure that we're moving money into certain accounts for future expenditures. So I think everything that the other council members have said, both for and against it, is valid. I do think that we've got some, we've got some time before we need to make that decision. Wouldn't say that it's, I think it's a little premature for us to just cut it off at the head right now, not do the allocation before we know more about the project and its necessity. I know there's a lot of people that have put a lot of effort into this. I wouldn't say, I know we've had some discussions. I don't know enough about what we're intending to do with the remodel, how that ties into, or what we're going to do to rehab it now, how does that tie into the remodel, all the things that would come with this, this project allocation, enough for me to say, I'm either for or against it. And I don't think I'm going to learn enough about it by the second reading to feel comfortable to say I'm either for or against it. So I think I'm okay with the allocation, with the caveat of we still need to, we still need more information before we move forward with the project.
But is there a council a little?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Perez. I reluctantly voted for this, but it was based on the condition that we were matching funds and not, we were coming up with half a million dollars to initially fund the project. So I will vote to allocate the funds, but I want a condition on us being, as council, approving it before the project starts.
So I mean, is that, is that direction? I mean, that's what we do up here is budget things and we give staff a budget and they go out and do it and they bring it back. So, I mean, if I'm, if I'm staff, I'm sitting here saying, well, they think we got funds, but likely it could fail if it's brought back as is, so. And maybe provide, provide more info for the second reading. And what I don't want to do is everybody say, yeah, let's allocate it. Staff spends however long, bidding it out, wasting a lot of time, then they come back and it fails 5-2, 4-3. I'm not saying which side I'm on, I'm just saying, I think as a governing body, we need to give them some direction before they spend too much time on it. Maybe we can do that with the memos and the documentation provided for the next meeting.
I think that's a fair point. I mean, I think we can have a, we can dovetail it with another agenda item that continues this conversation to give clear direction. I don't think that, at least I don't feel comfortable that I know enough now to be able to get to provide the direction, which is why I don't want to just say, we're not going to give the allocation, because once all the information comes in, we may find that we're for it. Like I said, there's, it's a, there's a lot of gears turning and we don't know how everything's going to lock in. I would say the direction is just allow for the allocation as the project progresses. If we get into an allocation for what are we going to do with, what are we going to move forward with design, we can talk then, you know, what is the budgetary impact of the project? How does donated funds come into play? What are we actually matching, all those things? I mean, I think there's a, there's still a lot of opportunity for us to input before money is spent, but I think it's too soon to say, let's not move forward with it. The alternative is we just, we cut it off now when we put it to a future budgetary item, but we treat it more like a capital project. We approve moving forward, then we allocate design funds, then we allocate construction cost, which is certainly a fair way to move, maneuver, but right now, we're not authorizing the expenditure of anything. We're just saying, we're shifting funds from here to here for, for this potential purpose. I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
But, John, you threw. But I agree with Councilmember Carbone. I mean, we initially approved this to a sum up to this amount as matching funds. And now we're saying, well, we're not going to do matching funds, we're just going to put half a million dollars towards this project. That's what we're saying now.
We're saying that we're moving, we're moving the money over to be spent for this, but we're not saying that we're authorizing the expenditure of the money. We could say the money is over here to match, but we're not going to spend it until the match is available.
If I could, Mayor, Council, I think Member Carbone's points are well taken that we'll bring back some additional material with the budget, the second reading, and we'll either have a separate agenda item at that time or at a very soon council meeting before we get too deep into this. And we'll have that discussion about whether, because the intention was, and that was, was before he was to ask, you know, moving forward on this outside of the match to stabilize the building, you know, as was described. But we'll bring it to you in this second reading and we'll bring some of the materials, but we won't move forward until we have a separate, specific discussion, direction on that, because that's, that's not going to help any of us. And like you said, this does sound different than anything else that we do a budget amendment for, where we march off and get things done that you want us to. I don't think we have that kind of clarity and we haven't provided enough at this point. So we'll make that promise and we'll do that that way, if that's, you're okay with that?
I thought that we had, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have, we'd done some preliminary design on that? CCLE had done it from the architect's end side?
Some very basic work. It's, it was a preliminary budget was put together based on a review of the facility, but it's the next step ultimately with approval upon further direction would be to do, you know, the design work. And then you'd come up with the total, total estimated budget and move forward with the appropriate contracts. I think, you know, from our standpoint, based on tonight's discussion, we need to get you some additional information. We'll provide that to you. And then ultimately, you'll let us know if you want to move forward with the project based on no additional funding that we have, or if you're, feel like there needs to be more discussion on how to move forward with the project. From our perspective, from my perspective, and then I'd also like to talk about the advisory board. There've been fundraising efforts and they've roughly come up with about $10,000 worth of fundraising. The facility is in a state of disrepair. Either at some point, whether it's within the next six months or next year, we're going to have to make a decision to renovate that facility. If we don't, it's no longer going to be there. That's really kind of the bottom line, long-term. So we need to decide if we want to renovate a city facility or not, and that's what this would do.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing on there, you know, the process we're going through right now is the same process that we do on all of our construction projects and design projects, of coming in to allocate the funds in there and do the design. We've done preliminary design on stuff to come up the cost estimate of what we're going to go through or not. So this is no different, really, to me, that, what we've done. And if you look on, and I think I call them, Mayor and Marquette both, that several years ago, this came up and the dollar amount that was needed to come in there to do some work on the facility was 65,000. And at that point, we helped it because we asked them to do, to do fundraiser on 50% of it. And so we're back in the same thing again, but again, this is, this is not coming out of anything other than a hot tax to do that. And if we wait another year, I mean, you can, you'll pay $30,000 to get it hauled off and there goes your history.
Yeah, and I would agree with, I mean, if our CVB Advisory Board sees this as a viable project and thinks it's going to be, you know, something as a future asset for the city moving forward and preservation of our history. I mean, I would love to see this move forward, you know, but I don't think that this is what we're discussing right now. I mean, to put the money aside, to consider it later, I think is perfectly fine and valid. I'm not saying that it's a done deal by any means, but I, I think it's such an important part of the city's history and to keep kicking the can down the road, eventually there's not going to be a can left to kick. So I'm with Member Owens on this.
Switching gears to another item, going back to the replacement vehicles. So we do the six with the, with the reimbursement funds. We have 16 left, roughly what would be the schedule in budgetary years for us to replace the remaining 16.
I think it depends on which way we go at mid-year. So I think what we would do is bring something for your discussion and early budget input that would outline maybe a few different scenarios. And then we would dump some money towards that at mid-year and then build something in the base for FY '21. That's not a great answer, but that's kind of where we're at.
If we, if we adjust it from mid-year, maybe we buy a vehicle or two possibly, so we knock it down to 14. So is the remainder 14 going to take three or four fiscal years for us to replace? Are we going to prioritize it? Or is the plan, is there any kind of budgetary discussion as to whether we're going to want to plan to, to knock this out in the next fiscal year? What I'm getting to is do we want to take and take a bigger chunk out of this with the allocations rather than six? Maybe we do 10 or 12 and be able to be able to get all these vehicles replaced and within a next fiscal year or two cycle?
So for comparison's sake, FY '20, we'd have five replacements. So if you follow that, it'd be roughly three fiscal years to take out the 16 here, if we continue on that path we were.
Okay. Maybe just for my indication, just clarify that as the second reading, because I may want to discuss if whether we're reallocating to take a bigger chunk out of that with these allocations on the second reading.
Where do you want to get the money from?
I think it's how we spend the 1.6. So would we be moving money from streets and sidewalks over to buy more vehicles? Any, any of the items that are within the 1.6? So I'm not moving any from, from any other funds. It's just how we're allocating the 1.6. At least that's what I'm, that's what I'm discussing is, do we prioritize more of the 1.6 that we would get from reimbursement towards buying more vehicles? Or do we want to allocate for the suggestion that, that staff has had?
It seemed like when you go back to the process, say, we approve this tonight, you have to take each one of those elements that you have on the screen and that you just brought up as, as a contribution from last year's budget to this next year's budget. You're going to have to go through the same audit process to, to make that transfer, to bring the budget up to the point where it could be audited by a, by our auditing process, auditor. So I suspect a lot, do you feel that some of these items that we're discussing are, can be caught in that process? You might have just had a slip on one or two or something?
Some of the FEMA items you're talking about?
Yeah, when you, when you, yeah, when you finalize the budget process to bring us, we say, now the budget today is whatever it is.
Sure, so there's still a lot of work our friends in accounting are doing to get that audit done. So if you're talking about the amount over policy we're projecting here, that 2.9?
The ones that are of concern there, yes.
I expect that to change. I don't expect it to change enough where we would have to drop anything out of the budget. It would just be less that we allocate at mid.
You don't think that your numbers were changing at all?
I think they will change. I don't think.
That's what I was saying, is they'll probably change and to catch up with the concerns that have been expressed, perhaps, I don't know.
Within the realm of possibility.
Since I'm not an auditor. Councilmember, any other question or comment? Anybody want to chip in at this point some more? Madam Secretary, I guess we, I believe we have a motion second on the floor. We'll find out. Whoops.
Councilmember Little, have you?
We put any, any conditions on this or are you just going to come back with second reading and some revisions?
We'll provide additional information at the, the second reading. And you've got, like we said, we're not going to spend the FEMA money until we've got it in the bank. We won't go forward on obligating the city for the depot until we have a separate discussion on that.
Maybe? Aye.
Did you vote aye?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Hernandez absent from the chamber.
Moving in our agenda to item number three, which is Hernandez, but I believe he stepped out the door. Item number three.
I'll take it, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution number R2019-295, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, we're in discussion.
So the TERS process requires many different decision points by different bodies. The council has to, the responsibilities for reviewing and approving these letters of financing agreement that, after the budget's amended, that these are required as well. These three that are before you are for three of our city projects, public improvements within the TERS boundaries. That's Fire Station Number Eight, Shadow Creek Public Library, and then the Nature Trail Connections. So these are amendments to those and moving those three improvement projects forward so that they'll be fully eligible for the anticipated costs, reimbursement from the TERS district proceeds.
Okay, does council have any question or comment on staff report? I don't believe I hear anybody that's interested. Just had them, Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second for item three.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Hernandez absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving to item four. Moving to item four, Hernandez.
Mayor, consideration possible action resolution number R2019-283, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second on that? We have motion second on the floor. Captain Staff. Captain Staff report.
Thanks, sir. The city entered into a agreement with the architectural firm PGAL for architectural design services for our new Shadow Creek Library. The libraries in Bressory County are built by the hosting communities, but then operated by Bressory County, so the construction is a city responsibility. We're fortunate that we're in a position where we can get this second library replacement for the store shop existing facility on Business Center Drive constructed under the TERS. We've, as part of the design process, been through that. There was, there's been considerable interest, I think even at the council table, for getting as much community space and meeting space as possible. It always seems to come up as a need, so we've taken that, and that's being incorporated and part of the design. So we're able to get a teaching theater similar to what's existed at Turner High School, then also additional large meeting spaces above and beyond, you know, even what we have across the street here at the Tom Reed Library. So that was one change element. And then also, through this process, we identified an opportunity to get, Bressory County, they have existing space for their tax office over at the Public Safety Building on Cullen. By moving it over into this additional public building, they will be able to serve the population there much more conveniently, and that also frees up future space within our Public Safety Building. So we see this as a big win-win. Bressory County would be, they've already budgeted for and will be helping us with the, some of the interim financing, but, you know, this would be space provided for this public use under the TERS in the library. And so all told, the additions to the, then designs from when we initially started off in this process, it's about a 30% addition to the building, can all be accomplished on this site. And so with that, there's commensurate design fees, you know, programming. I believe this represents about 23% increase in recognition of that. And so this is the necessary design to be able to keep us moving forward on this project as it's been amended. Nothing to add?
Anything? Council have any question or comment on the staff report? Did you, you have any comments?
Yeah, I've always got a comment. Yeah, I guess GL is here on there. And, and really, you know, my first comment was 100-seat facility, and there I thought was pretty expensive. I know Turner's got one that we're going to have an elevated stage and all of that on there. You know, if, if you come in and you look at the cost of that, and probably if you come in and put item, line item five over here, or the agenda number five into it, you look at 23,000, or $23,500,000 for the library on 39,000 square feet, that gives you a tall cost of $602 a square foot. That just seems like that's pretty expensive to me. I don't know. Maybe, maybe not, so I don't build libraries.
Well, just on a square footage basis, I appreciate you'd asked about that earlier. I mean, our calculations, we're looking at like $400 a square foot, and this is still early stage. The next item is to get into the CMAR.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, we're looking at, you know, just rough numbers at this early stage, like $400, or 25 is what, on that basis for the construction.
Yeah, well, if you add what we got in here right now, and that's looking at maybe something change on this as we go through, but that's, you know, we've got 23,500,000 in there for the library, and with what we're doing now PGAL, we're extending out 39,000 square feet on there. So if you, you know, do the numbers, it still comes out to 602. Now, there may be some adjustments through there to, due to that in order to, to get it a little bit lower, but that just seems, and one other thing on there, how much is the county putting into this project?
Well, again, it's funded by the TERS, so they're not putting any money into it anymore than we are, other than the interim financing. So we'd approached them, and, you know, they, they, you know, at that stage, when it was, just on square footage, asked them to float $1 million, which is what they budgeted, so that's what, they would get reimbursed just like we will when it's done. So nobody's, neither the city nor the counties, quote unquote, you know, it's, it's money from the TERS, not from our, ultimately from our general funds.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay.
You know, the question to come from council?
The only thing I'd add is that, you know, the architectural services, which we've awarded, you know, this amendment, again, staff's, you know, reviewed that, and their work effort will continue to, you know, review their hours put in on the project, and it's in line, I mean, the original, I believe, or the design, you know, looking at maybe 7% of the construction costs, and so, you know, it's, it's less proportional than what we originally awarded, so.
Thanks for that clarification, Clay. I think I'd, I'd mentioned, I'd mentioned when the original award came out, you know, I think value of the contract for the design services is on the high end. As I said before, I expect that everything to be tight, and that we're not, we don't have any RFIs or change orders of significance when we get into construction. Certainly, the CMAR will help with that, but that's my expectation. I, I've talked to staff. I think we're going to keep careful eye on the man-hours to make sure that the project, the man-hours are appropriate for the effort, and the effort is, and the, and the charges are appropriate for the design that we're getting. And I trust that they're going to, they're going to keep an eye on it. In general, I'm concerned with the value of the design, but I'm, I'm trusting staff and also ask to be informed about as, getting more information as the project progresses, so I can take a look at the numbers to ensure that the, the project is meeting what I think are the standards set for this kind of a design. It's a very expensive building to design thus far. This is not a cheap design, and, you know, being in the industry, I've, I've been a part of a number of public projects that are of more significant scope. I think technology-wise, MEP-wise, civil-wise certainly, have more design, more, more challenges to the design, and then have not meet this value. So I'm hoping that where the man-hours can be cut, they'll be cut. I'm hoping that we'll see the value in the design when, when it comes to us and it gets into construction.
Is there not a cheaper design that we can do? I mean, 23 and a half million dollars is an expensive building for a library. I, I don't know that that's the best use of some of the TERS money. I mean, there's so much more we could do, so many other projects that we could do with, with that money. I'm not against the library. I think we need the library, but, I mean, 23 and a half million dollars is pretty steep. And I'm looking at, you know, the design on here, and it's a very fancy building. I mean, do we need to have a library that, that, that type of structure? I mean?
One of the things that I don't know whether it shows in the wording here or not, but if you read, that I believe we're going to take, move the county tax office from the Public Safety Building over to this facility, if I'm not, oh, which means that it's going to help both the tax facility office as well as the Bressory County libraries at both the same time.
I guess a $12 million animal shelter is nothing compared to 23 and a half million dollars for another building.
This was discussed at the TERS II annual meeting, and they felt it was something that they felt, if you're going to build it, let's make it nice because it's going to be in the, acts of the Shadow Creek Range, TERS II area, and they want to make sure that they have, solve their problems of share for the quality of the development for the people out there, because it would be in an area where it's going to be most, a bunch of other attractive facilities, so it needs to shine out. Council, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I calculated it'd be $653 a square foot, which is right up there with the animal shelter. It seems like, I guess that's the new benchmark for buildings in Arland. They've got to be over $600 a square foot. When I talk to contractors, they can't believe it. They said we can build hospitals for $350 a square feet. I don't know, it just seems like an excessive amount of money to me.
Any further comments?
Yeah, just a, just a quick comment. I, I think that there, there is some sticker shock associated with the number, but just when we're talking about any of these specialized facilities, like libraries or the animal shelter, I, I think really the important number to know is the comps of other communities that are doing it versus just the raw number, because I think the, really the only metric that all of us are comparing this to mentally, I mean, you just threw out hospitals, but for the most part, you're thinking, what's the square footage of my home, which of course is going to be different. So I, I couldn't tell you if it's high or low, because I'm, I'm not familiar with the industry standard, but I, I think that would be kind of helpful in a lot of these discussions, if we could see what other communities are doing this for on a square footage basis.
You know, what I would suggest is, we go through the design process, certainly we're going through a wish list, we're throwing everything on there, and that we have, we have a capped value based on what was an approved appropriation. Let's not say it's the final answer. What we can get is the design, get the CMAR to try and pull out any, anything in the design that doesn't necessarily need to be there, as what the CMAR process should, should do. Once we get the design in, we start getting some early, early estimates on what we think the construction cost to be, you know, we can start, we can start setting the budget down from there. We can start talking to the design team. Certainly, it would cost us more in the design to start veing things down to get to a more, a budget number that we think is more commensurate to the facility we're adding. So I think there's still work for us to do. I, I hate to, I'm, I'm equally challenged by the, the value of this library right now, and this has been a project that I prioritize since I've been on council. I want this library to happen, but I also want to be careful about the number and making sure that if we're spending this money, that we're seeing the value. Right now, I'm not there yet, and I would say I'm the greatest champion for this, for this project, or has been the greatest champion for the project. I want the design process to go through, let our project staff work through the project, through the program that they, they've envisioned, through community outreach, through our other partners in here, get the estimate, and once we get the estimate, before we go out to bid, see if that's something that we're going to be comfortable with. I think that's going to be a process that makes us a little bit more comfortable. If we come in and it says, hey, it's going to be 21 million, and we're not comfortable spending 21 million, and then we set a value and start talking about a value engineering things that we may not necessarily want to spend on, that may not be a priority for the area. So I'm hoping that that's not going to be the case. I'm hoping that spend as much as we, as much as we are on the design, that all the value is going to be built into the design. Again, for the level of effort that we're, that we're putting in design financially, I, I expect that we're going to, we're going to have a good list of VE items that we can immediately incorporate in, into the project to satisfy some of the concerns of council. I, I just don't, I don't, I'm reticent to start chopping the project now. I want to see the whole thing through, but I'm not comfortable yet, based on the value that we're getting on, on moving forward with the, with the construction of the cost that we have right now, unless I see more value.
Could we get one of your representatives here, PGA, to come up and vote him?
Counsel, if I may, while the budget is established at 23 and a half million dollars, that includes a lot of things, other than the construction of the building. Of course, it includes the design. It includes some project contingency from the, when we originally started this project to ensure that inflation or tariffs or any of those things did not put us in a position to where we had to go get additional authorization to build a project, or additional authorization, authorization from the TERS. It also includes a healthy FF and E budget, 2.2 million dollars, because when we build or expand libraries, it's the city's responsibility to provide the initial circulation, and that's part of that cost as well. So if you look at the actual construction number in the budget, it's a little bit south of 18 million dollars, and we're really shooting for less than that as we work through the CMAR process. So just wanted to go through the budget and kind of clarify what all those different pieces are and what we truly are talking about from a construction cost standpoint. Thank you.
While you're coming up, and I'll just, I'll respond to what Mr. Epperson said. I think, I appreciate that clarification. I, I really have a lot of faith and trust in our project management staff to bring us value, like I said, as we develop the process. I think we're going to all be keeping an eye on it. So as y'all develop documents, we want to be able to see that value.
Absolutely. Jeff Buller with the PGAL, I'm a principal with PGAL.
Yeah.
Jeff, I was going, going over the information here and the basic services and, and the extension on there, but reimbursement of expenses, I guess for the original amount, then when we come in and added the other, they jumped up another $6,000 for the services on there, and additional services.
That is.
Another 42,000.
The additional services is specifically related to an additional consultant that's being added into these fees.
Right.
With the addition of the teaching theater and the more focus on the meeting rooms, we've added a specialty acoustical consultant and an audiovisual and IT consultant for those spaces, and those expenses are related to them. So a large portion of this increase, or not a large, but a, a portion of this increase is related specifically to that program. The, the cost per square foot budget that we're aiming for is, for the cost of the construction, is $425 a square foot. We are working on projects with, right now, library projects that are very comparable to this, with the city of Round Rock, Dripping Springs, Cedar Hill, and San Marcos, and this is right in the same range exactly that we're working with them for budgets for comparable peer cities.
Yeah, and I guess, looking at this, of course, this coming up, the next item on here on that number five with spar glass on there, but if you're coming up with the cost of, of what it is for the total amount of the project, you would add that in to CMAR as a part of that, with also the construction cost and the design cost. And that's where, you know, when I looked at it today, it was coming up quite, quite expensive on there.
It is a, it is a large project, yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and I know PGA from years when we started, you know, when y'all started, through their Jack and all of them to, to do that. But, you know, and I know that y'all do quite a bit of this work all across, you know, Texas, and we even worked on one together in LaGuardia. But, you know, that, it just seemed like it was very extensive, and this is no different than what we've done the others, appropriating the money up to that point to be able to use up there. And I know that, Brent, what you were saying on there is, of course, also that, you know, we're going to see about cutting it, but, you know, the, I think the outside contingencies in, in FF and E was something like 1.4 million. That was in the, the dollar figure that I saw on there, but still, you know, I just feel like, you know, it's a lot, and I'm, you know, as Councilmember Perez was talking about, of looking at this as we go on. But if you're saying that, that you're looking at now maybe around the 406 or whatever the number is on there.
We're trying to bring the project in not to exceed, our, our recommendation to the city is that we could bring the project in around four, or not, not to exceed $425 per square foot of heated area.
So that's in the ballpark of the other ones that you're doing now?
Yes, sir. We're doing a 65,000 square foot, three-story project seated around rock. It's slightly less than that because of the, it's a lot larger project economy of scales, but we're using the same budget numbers right now in Dripping Springs, Cedar Hill. The San Marcos project is an addition, so that's a little harder to, to evaluate, but yeah, these are all the, it's kind of the rate that these libraries are being built at right now.
Is that, is that something, are those other libraries, are they using CMAR?
The Round Rock Library is not. Dripping Springs is likely going to. Right now, we're doing a study phase for them, and so they're more of a feasibility and a conceptual design, and so that's to be determined. And the Dripping Springs Library, that is their, this- And the Dripping Springs Library, that is, this is their budget. We just, in the process of signing, excuse me, Cedar Hill, we're in the process of signing a contract with them right now for about a 48,000 square foot project, but their budget is based on this, a similar number, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And I might add, I think it would be interesting to know is that we, we have had extensive meetings with Spaglass, they've been generous with their time, even knowing that you guys haven't yet approved their contract. They've been generous in the last couple of weeks or more with their time actually doing an initial estimate for us, and we've had extensive value engineering discussions with them on all components of the, of this city, of the project. We've created a schematic design that is pretty in-depth and actually has framing, steel framing plans, foundation plans, and a pretty extensive M E P narrative, and so they have quite a lot to go on at this point, and they've given some good feedback. As a matter of fact, we were meeting with the city this afternoon and the staff going through a number of items to create the value that you deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was looking through here, it says that the portion of the project attributed to, attributable to the county tax office will be pre-financed by Missouri County. Well, I couldn't find the percentage, do we just know, I mean, just offhand?
No, again, we, we had a square footage and based on a number, we, and the county needs them for budgeting, so we said a million dollars. So that's what they budget, and that's what.
Be a million dollars off of these numbers that we're discussing, is that from?
Again, that's just, that's just for the financing.
But this is all, I mean, as you said, like interim financing basically anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So I mean, and that's what, like a four, five-year reimbursement period, something like that?
Projections from the TERS is, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I would just add, you know, I, I know Jesse Gonzalez, who was with Spaglass for 34 years, I mean, I know that they're a reputable company, I think that they're operating the way that I know Jesse's reputation would, would lead me to believe, in that, in that sense of, of everybody working together cooperatively, like us to just start preemptively thinking about some value engineering items, start targeting as we, as we progress this project. If we start getting to values that are in excess of what, what may be projected, or honestly, what we may be willing to spend, that we have some items readily available that we don't have a whole lot of additional effort to pay for to try and go back and look for V E items. I think they should be, the value that we're paying on, on the design, I think that should be, that should be readily available when we come up to contract.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment?
I would just like to say, I wasn't questioning the cost of the design fee. I think we, we changed the design and added quite a bit more space, so obviously your fees are going to go up, and what I read on reasonable architectural fees are within that range, based on the total amount that's, you're projecting that it will cost. If it ends up costing 22 million, then your probably at the low end of the range, so just wanted to make that clear.
I appreciate that. It's not going to cost 22 million for the cost of work, it will not. Not, we're talking construction costs is what we're speaking of right now. I understand you have a project budget, but the cost of work of the construction will not be that.
And my comment should be very basic, when we go through design, can we make sure that we hit all the city regulations with trees and open space and everything that we'd make a business do? We make sure that we follow our own rules.
And make sure that our fire suppression system is in.
So now it does cost 22 million.
You know, that's a great point. We took the city's arborist out to the site as a design team with our landscape architect, and have literally walked around and looked at all of the principal trees to find out what's important to the city and to the community, and the Shadow Creek Ranch, to make sure that we, we deliver those trees in healthy condition. Yeah, absolutely. It's a beautiful site.
Any other question or comment? Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second here on item four.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
The mayor made my vote for me, so yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Since we're only voting on the fees for the architect, aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving in our agenda, the new business item five. Councilmember Perez, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-293, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As was described in, in great detail, we've been through a process with this construction manager at risk for our new Westside Pearland Public Library. We've got a number of proposals and reviewed those very aggressively, and I've come to you with a recommendation for Spaglass. This would get that ball more than rolling to engage with Spaglass for that C M R process. They have extensive experience of the scale and complexity that's necessary for this project, and as was just noted with the other item, they've already engaged with staff and the architect to provide some early looks and thinking, but this would bring them alongside us for this project on a very beautiful, efficient, effective library there that'll stand the test of time and be a great addition. You know, I don't want to retread the need for the project and what this all entails, but this will definitely, on the land that was designated as part of the Shadow Creek Master Plan, for public purposes, give us that opportunity to build this library there on the north side of Shadow Creek. So we're looking forward to this process and now with Spaglass and P G A L, we'll have the team assembled to bring this to fruition.
Counsel, have any question or comment based on this staff report of this item?
P G, I mean, Spaglass, can we have somebody up the podium?
Roger Berry with Spaglass Construction, Vice President of Operations.
Good. Yeah, and, you know, this, we give out contracts, if nobody's here with the firm that's going to get the contract, then we delay the contract. But I, I knew you were here though, but on there, but, you know, I guess Trent and I go back with a number of years with Spaglass and when Jesse was there on there, and so that brings a lot more, but it looks like that y'all are pretty tight on your number. I mean, and I guess isn't what, a 3% on their total of, of that on the basic services and the, and the fees and stuff, it seemed like it's a pretty tight number. And what projects do y'all have ongoing now that can improve this, like the library or something like that?
We've probably got about 20 projects going on currently for 2019, from healthcare at Ben Taub to Methodist to a new library for the City of Houston, Westbury Library. We're working on senior living projects in Rice University, a pretty diverse group. We've got a civil division that's also doing about a three-mile stretch of FM 249 on the north side of town. I think one of the things that brings us to the table is we've got a lot of experience in pricing based on the types of projects that we do, and not only do we do C M at Risk work, we also do hard bid works, so we're, we're in tune with what the current market pricing is today.
Okay, good. That, that was what I was hoping you would come out with on there, the activities that y'all currently doing across not only here in the Houston area but outside of Houston area, so. But I know that you've been working with P G A L on this, do you see anything possibly that we may want to look at in detail or what?
Yes, sir, there is. We've offered some, some value engineering options today, and we'll price any option that somebody may come up with for the decision of the city to accept or reject as part of the design or construction.
Okay. So on this C M R, you know, we've got staff that's not working on the other projects that's able to work with us on this one?
Yes, sir. We have the dedicated staff that work on it through estimating, through our construction. We've got a construction manager dedicated to pre-construction services. We've also got our, our project manager, Justin Nowak here tonight, who is also working as part of the job to get him plugged in early in pre-construction, so he knows what's going on in the construction phase.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you.
Just to reiterate what I asked P G A L on the other side of coin, y'all are comfortable working with them as apparently y'all already have about identifying potential small and major V E items that can help us have some options for keeping the price down for the project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other question or comments?
Do you have any idea off the top of your head what the cost per square foot per construction of the Houston library is?
No, sir, don't. We've just started that and not, not sure what it's going to end up just yet. We're still in design right now.
Yes, there's a lot of glass exposed on the proposed drawing. Is that a pretty high-tempered glass on there? It's not just, it's not glass, it's really a more of a metallic glass, isn't it?
I'm not sure.
How would you, how would you describe that glass because, which I'm sure that...
I think the main component of the glass today is based on the hurricane rating, just to make sure that we get the, the strength required for this particular zone in wind rating, in addition to determine if the glass needs to be impact resistant or not. There's a lot of films and colors of the glass, and I don't know that the glass itself has been selected yet.
Sure.
But I'm sure samples will be submitted for, for city approval.
Yeah, okay. Any other question or comment from the council?
Yeah, I guess the comment, from this side, we're trying to lower the price, but you get paid a 3% of the, larger the project, the more you get paid, correct?
We get paid 3% based on the cost of the work.
Right. So I mean, that's, we're going to say, here, let's cut it, let's cut it, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that when it comes back, and I guess on the prior award, if we, if we start monkeying and cutting too much stuff, then we're going to be approving another amendment to P G A L to pay them more money to cut stuff, so.
Well, I, I think what, based on the discussion that we just had, they're, they're willing to go through the V E items preemptively and have us a menu of value engineering items that we can, we can look at when we're talking about moving forward the, the award with respect to the value of the project. I do a number of public projects, I think, I trust P G A L and Spaglass to operate as, my company would operate and the other companies I work with would operate, and that you find the value, and then if it means that you take a little less on the project, then you're still working for the best interest of the client. It's not unusual in this industry, though it seems, seems unusual, that is, that is not atypical. You find the value, and then the, the end of the, the end of the contract means that you adjust the, adjust the fees. I also have a lot of faith in our project staff. They're, they're pretty experienced, they know what they're doing, they know how to find value where, where it needs to be found. So I think we're in good hands. I think by virtue of providing, borrowing your term for, from earlier, providing direction as to what our expectations are, I'm, I believe everybody's highly motivated to ensure that those, that those directions are followed.
I guess to follow up on the, all the glass, I know the school district's going through a big safety and security in terms of coatings to put on glass, so I guess at some point, if we can at least have that discussion, if we're going to do anything, I know bullet resistant and going to be cost-effective, but I don't know, with where we're headed out in today's environment and knowing that the school district is going back and hardening the schools, we want to have a 100% glass facade, that, at least let's have the discussion through the design phase. I know it's pretty and everything, but does it really make sense with hurricanes and, and security issues? I can't answer that, and I don't, we don't need to answer it now, but at least have that, take that into consideration.
I wouldn't, I would say that that's a great, that's a great answer, or that's a great comment, particularly long-term maintenance. We may be able to get the value, the value of the construction down, but if we're looking at a glass-clad building that's, that's significant glass-clad building, the, the cost of the H V A C goes up quite a bit, so just again, another V E item to consider.
It's awfully quiet. Any other comment from the council? Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thanks, sir.
Moving into our agenda, item number six, and Councilmember Perez is going.
Thank you, Mayor. And, no, I'm not reading this one. In the best interest of the city, I think it's important for me to know for the public record, while I've not received any, any money for this project or am under contract for the project, I did advise the applicants early on before they were negotiating with the city about direction. I think in fairness to the citizens, it's better for me to recuse myself and step out of the chamber for this discussion, which I will do now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Owens, I want you to present this after we have a speaker at this point.
After you what?
Go ahead and introduce.
Okay. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-296, that's a move.
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor.
Mayor, we have one person who would like to speak on this item. He's kind of new to city council, Mr. Alan Mueller.
There he is.
Give us your address.
It's me again. Alan Mueller, 4201 Broadway here in Pearland, excuse me, here tonight on behalf of Dr. Menon and the Menon Enclave Project. We were here back in April, you may recall, talking about how to get sanitary sewer extended to the, the project that Dr. Menon wants to do adjacent to the temple off of McLean and Amy Lane. That was at a time when we were kind of still learning about the new annexation laws, and so you wanted to make sure that whatever you did in this particular case kind of fit with your overall policy for utility extensions. So you all worked on that, and that was approved, that new policy was approved in June of this year, and so since that time, we've been working with the city attorney's office on developing this agreement that conforms to that policy. So we've been happy to be your guinea pig in that process, but I think this agreement is, it's mutually beneficial. It follows the policy, Dr. Menon or the, and the Property Owner Association that he will create will fund the lift station and the force main along Amy Lane. They'll also take over maintenance responsibility for a portion of the existing McLean Lane, McLean Line, excuse me. The residents there will pay the out-of-district or out-of-city rates for impact fees and water and sewer fees, and so I think from a financial perspective, city has no obligations and it's a revenue generator for you in the long run, and we think it's going to create a great little community there that's going to be good for the whole Pearland community that, again, benefits and serves the, the temple population in that area. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's move to staff report at this point.
Experienced counsel, this is a resolution for area to come into the city and us to provide water sewer services. This does follow a new policy that we had implemented. The property is not contiguous to the city, so this would be a way that they could serve that property at their expense and be in a position through some good thinking and looking ahead out of our city attorney's office, in a position to come into the city when it is contiguous and appropriate, but in the meantime, this does get them that service level and protects the city's interests in terms of our system and maintenance of that, so really is a win-win and sets a standard for how we can look at these areas for these kinds of unique cases where the property is in our E T J, but not, not quite ripe for voluntary annexation. So I recommend your consideration of this and going forward.
Okay. Counsel, have any question or comment on this based on staff report and also the witness that we just heard from? Counsel, come on.
I'd just like to thank staff. I'd just like to thank staff for working through this. I think the initial answer was no, we don't want to, but I, I think it makes sense with increased rates and anyway, I know it wasn't easy thing to do, but I appreciate staff working through it.
Any other question or comment on this item? I think it's one that is a good example of how we could implement the motion and action of the council to, in a situation such as this, but at some point, as he becomes in proximity to, to our boundaries, the, the property would be annexed into the city. And that's a near, a very fertile area out there for potential annexation because of the quality of the, of the area, because that's where the Monarcha Temple is a little further down. And I think that as it grows, that's a lot of open space down there that would be very fruitful for us to have such quality as individuals as Dr. Menon and to be able to work and use this as a good example of, of the process that we approved. So I think it's a great idea. Any question from city council at this point? Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Moving in our agenda to item number seven, Councilmember Orlando.
Consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1587, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is a first reading for a total rewrite of chapter 29 of our code of ordinances relating to traffic, really helps streamline and modernize and clarify the various regulations, eliminates a lot of chaff that was either obsolete or already in state codes and not necessary for us locally. Did try to preserve the, the local provisions that are appropriate for this day and age. You know, there's everything from how, you know, just parking and other kinds of offenses and the citations and bringing that up to, to 2019 standards and going forward. So our legal department and police department have worked very hard on this and recommend your consideration so we can move forward and get this into place. Nothing to add, sir.
Counsel, have any question or comment on staff report?
We regulate it in roller skates?
Sometimes, yeah.
Roller skates and peeling out. I think it's time to change.
Digging.
Okay. Any comments from council at this point? There are none. Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number eight, Councilmember Carbone, would you place this on the table for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution R 2019-297, so moved.
Second.
Motion second on staff report.
I'm really turning this over to council. This is, the next three items are yours. The council did vote and make nominations. And so with the city's allocation of votes, larger portions in, in Missouri County, really negligible in Fort Bend and Harris, but still required. And you, you can choose from the nominations that you made, presumably you'd cast those for the folks that you asked to be put on the nominations, but these next three are all the council's prerogative, so.
Mayor, I make a motion that we cast all our votes to George Sanders.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have motion second on the floor.
Can I just offer a comment? I already spoke to Darren about this, but in the future, while I did do some research on these nominees, I feel comfortable tonight voting for Mr. Sanders. Just in the future, whatever additional information we can provide in the packets for the candidates, whether we get that independently or from the counties themselves would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I'd ask, just so we meet that expectation, I don't know what we can or should do and how much staff time you want us to dedicate to that, because these are really the county's nominations. We, we wouldn't have any way of, we'd have to go out and do our own research that's even possible for some of these, so.
Sure. I mean, even if it's just a simple ask of the county to provide additional information.
And to add on there, just something I would appreciate, I, I wasn't aware, I know we did this a couple of weeks ago when we were, we had the opportunity to make nominations, but I wasn't aware that we were going to have that opportunity until the, the Thursday packet before. So maybe part of it is, is also just having a longer lead time to give us the opportunity to vet candidates and, you know, ask someone to, to throw their hat in the ring.
This can be your heads up. We do this every year. It's annual basis.
I'm glad you're back.
Appreciate it. I'm, I'm sure there's going to be other, there's other entities and boards that have very various terms, so maybe for new council members, we could get a sheet together. That'd be helpful for them. Thanks.
And just to clarify, it is, they serve two-year terms, so we, it will be every two years.
There you go, Tony.
Got to, got to get it written down.
I might remind you that the predecessor to Mr. Sanders was Joe Knight, and they had worked together on, on the appraisal areas. And Sanders was also on the board of directors of the Economic, Pearland Economic Corporation. And so he's a well, well schooled in, in Pearland's need for appropriate attention when it comes to property appraisal. And I would recommend him as a quality person. Matter of fact, I hate to, just a point of interest, he and I served on the same floor building five at Johnson Space Center during the Apollo program. So I had a chance to get to know him real well before we got to know him here in Pearland. He's a, he's a quality young man. Any other question or comment from council? Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor for George Sanders.
Councilmember Carbone, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving to item number nine, Councilmember Little, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2019-298, so moved.
Second.
Motion second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Same type of program, Mayor, it's the council's prerogative on casting the votes from among those, presumably the one that you nominated, you'd support for the Fort Bend.
Mayor, make a motion, we cast all our votes for Michael D. Rozell.
Second.
Any further question or comment? Does, what were the count, what were the numbers? Okay, good. Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Little, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to new business item number 10, Councilmember Hernandez, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2019-299, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
This for the Harris County, which we're a small percentage of in their scheme.
Mayor, I make the motion, we cast all our votes for Mike Sullivan.
Second.
Mike has been a representative of, and a quality representative of that process, and he looks his great favor on the area in Missouri County, so. Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number 13, mayor council issues for the city council discussion. There are issues for our discussion now for next meeting. Item 14 is executive session of Texas Government Code, section 551.072, consultation with city attorney regarding the sale, lease, or exchange of real property. Obviously, we can, we cannot make a decision in the executive session, but it must be brought back to open session for handling. And at this point, we, looking at it, we're, we are recessing the executive session at 8:54. Return to executive session at 9:09. As we, in our agenda, move to act, to new business continued, which is item, new business item 11. And Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration possible action regarding the sale and lease of, no action on this item.
No action, okay. Okay, with that information, then the council has returned to executive session at 9:10. Other business, none. Adjournment at 9:11? We are adjourned.